Our second public hearing is to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce ordinance amending and replacing Chapter 12.230, establishing an affordable housing program and affordable housing impact fees to Title 12, Land Use of the San Bruno Municipal Code, and a resolution establishing affordable housing impact fees for residential and non-residential development projects.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. The purpose of this item is for the City Council to consider the introduction of an ordinance and approval of a resolution to establish affordable housing impact fees for residential and non-residential development projects in San Bruno. The proposed ordinance would establish a local source of funding for new affordable housing for households struggling with high housing costs and a shortage of affordable housing. The housing created with this funding will also help the city to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation obligations. The ordinance is the culmination of a two-year process that's included City Council review of the Grand Nexus Study in October 2015 and City Council meetings in April and September of this year. The Planning Commission reviewed the draft ordinance and resolution in August of 2016 and recommended City Council approval. Providing adequate housing for people at all income levels is a goal of the 2015 San Bruno Housing Element. The city faces enormous challenges to expand affordable housing for very low, low, and moderate income households as housing prices have risen faster than incomes. The region faces an affordable housing crisis characterized by development primarily of market rate units and very few affordable units. New market rate housing is only affordable to people making higher income wages, although half or more of new jobs pay lower income wages. In San Bruno, roughly 23% of households are in the very low income level. 23% are low income, 14% are moderate, and 40% are above moderate. To give you an idea what this means, in housing prices in 2015 were approximately $900,000 in median house price. And a family of a modern income, family of four, could afford to pay approximately $505,000 for a three-bedroom home. So there is a very wide gap there. A four-person low-income household can afford to pay about $2,200 per month for a three-bedroom apartment where that apartment would probably cost about $3,000 per month. The improved economy has also brought increased pressure on the non-residential market to produce more office and commercial space, increasing pressure on the housing stock. In addition, cutbacks in federal and state funding have reduced the effectiveness of state and federal programs for affordable housing. One example is the dissolution of redevelopment agencies in 2012, which resulted in a significant loss in funding for the city of San Bruno, which was devoted for affordable housing purposes. Finally, to add to this good news, the Bay Area is forecast to grow by over 2 million people and create over 1 million jobs between 2010 and 2040, placing increased pressure on the housing supply, resulting in the need for approximately 660,000 new housing units in the Bay Area. In light of these facts, the Housing Element called for San Bruno to participate in the San Mateo County Grand Nexus Study to help address affordable housing needs. As a consequence, the city worked with 15 other jurisdictions to prepare Nexus Studies tailored to the local economic conditions and needs of each jurisdiction. The Nexus Study is a report that is required under state law before impact fees can be established. The Nexus Study analyzed the relationship between new development and the need for affordable housing for new lower-income workers, and determined permissible and reasonable impact fees for both residential and non-residential development. The study estimated, just to give you an idea of how the study, what the steps were in the study, the study estimated income, the incomes of new residents of market rate housing and the goods and services that they would purchase, and also new, and the new workers to provide those goods and services. The study then calculated the number of workers eligible for affordable housing and the affordability gap between what lower-income households can afford to buy or rent and the cost of building a new unit. Finally, the study determined a maximum Nexus-supported impact fee for residential and non-residential development. This represents the maximum fee that can be legally charged to developers. Many jurisdictions in California are now using impact fees to address the growing affordable housing needs in their communities. In San Mateo County, the cities of Daly City, Redwood City, San Carlos, the city of San Mateo, and San Mateo County have implemented impact fees within the last two years. And other cities are considering adoption of impact fees as well. The highlights of the ordinance requirements include the following. The ordinance would apply to all new residential projects of five or more units and all new residential, excuse me, all new commercial development. For-sale projects would be required to include 15% of, 15% affordable units onsite, and payment of a fee would be allowed as an alternative, similar to the existing below-market-rate housing ordinance. Rental and commercial projects would be required to pay impact fees. Alternatives would include onsite or offsite construction of affordable housing, or other alternatives meeting the city's affordable housing goals. As I mentioned, the ordinance does provide alternatives to the primary requirements. The ordinance also provides the standards for development of affordable housing units, and it establishes an affordable housing fund. The funds that, in the Affordable Housing Fund, could be used to construct new affordable worker housing, or to subsidize additional units in a project, or to deepen the affordability level of units. As the fund grows, there will be the opportunity to issue an RFP to work with an affordable housing developer, such as Menopan Sula, if the city wishes to do that. The establishment of the impact fee itself, the amount of the fee would, it would be established through the accompanying resolution, and so, which includes fees that are set below the maximum allowed, and that's based on financial feasibility analysis that was included in the Nexus Study. So if you would show that slide, please, David. So the recommended impact fee for residential projects is $25 per square foot for ownership projects, and $20 per square foot for condominium and rental projects. The recommended commercial linkage fee is $5 for all commercial development types, which includes office, and R&amp;D, retail, and hotel. And the table shows the comparison of San Bruno's proposed impact fees to other communities that have developed impact fees or are in the process of doing so. So on the residential side, which is the right side of the chart, you can see that we're pretty, you know, similar to other communities that have adopted fees, the $25 for a single-family, 20 for condo and rental. On the commercial side, the $5 across the board is lower than the rest of the county. And the explanation for that really is that the analysis that was done in the Nexus Study looked at four scenarios to test feasibility of the, of the fee. So it looked at $5, $10, $20, and then the maximum fee, which is sort of astronomical. And what it found was that $5 was sort of the threshold of feasibility. So that, that was a, you know, the method, they used a standard methodology to determine the feasibility. And one thing that the consultant who prepared the report, that's Strategic Economics and Vernazzo Wolf and Associates, is that the fees tend to be higher the closer you get to the center of Silicon Valley. And they suggested that the most comparable fee for San Bruno would be Foster City, which as you can see is lower generally than, for example, city of San Mateo, or, yeah, or San Carlos for office. So that, that's the, that is the reason for the lower fees that staff is proposing. The impact fee resolution, the ordinance and resolution were presented to the City Council at the September 13, 2016 City Council Meeting. The City Council expressed general support for the ordinance and the resolution. However, in response to public comments received prior to and during that meeting, the City Council directed staff to conduct further research and return with recommendations on the comments received. The ordinance and resolution were updated based on staff review of the comments and our recommendations, and of the, there were four issues really that were covered there. And two of them, I think everybody agreed on, which had to do with the phasing of the development of affordable units with respect to the, to the market rate units. And I think what we agreed on was that a developer, a developer could propose an alternative phasing plan, and the City Council would give the final approval for that plan. The other issue had to do with renting of units to staff of a, of a property, or a developer or owner. And that was specifically related to the Community College project. And I think we agreed that, that renting to staff of the Community College, or to a developer who was specifically building housing that was intended for the, their employees, could be considered with final approval by the City Council. So those are incorporated into the ordinance. So now I'll focus on, I think, the two issues that were not resolved at the time. And the first is that the Community College District had requested that the ordinance specifically exempt the district from affordable housing requirements for residential and non-residential projects on property owned by the district. The ordinance has been amended to specifically exempt non-residential projects that are used exclusively for governmental or educational purposes on district property. However, staff does not recommend an exemption for residential, for residential projects on public school property for the following reasons. The city's goal for affordable housing is to ensure that affordable units are available to lower-income households and remain affordable for a period of 55 years, rental units, that is. All residential, all residential projects should provide an acceptable percentage of housing, of affordable housing, but there is no assurance that housing built by a community college or, or school district will remain affordable without deed restrictions. In addition, the ordinance already includes a mechanism to negotiate the affordable housing obligation in developing an affordable housing plan. And the city would work with public schools on a case-by-case basis to determine a reasonable affordable housing plan. And staff has reviewed this recommendation with the college district, and we think that there is agreement on, on that matter. So the second issue is whether the city should provide a 25% fee reduction for projects that pay workers prevailing wages or union wages. Staff does not recommend allowing such a reduction for the following reasons. First, the Nexus Study fees have been set at a level to ensure financial feasibility, which I mentioned before, there was a, an analysis of different scenarios, and we chose a scenario where the project is still, is feasible. The Nexus Study methodology used conservative assumptions, resulting in lower fees in, generally. So, for example, it took into, into account prevailing wages. It did not consider extremely low-income households, which would have a much wider affordability gap than very low, lower, moderate income houses, and would have resulted in, in a higher fee. And it also used a lower lane, range of land and construction costs, as well as using older market, the market data is from 2014. So the fees that were developed from these conservative assumptions are already probably on the low end. And as I mentioned, the, that the Nexus Study took into account prevailing wages, and the way it did this was, as I mentioned earlier, the, in the steps in calculating the fee, one step is, is calculating an affordability gap between what a lower-income household can afford to pay and the cost to develop the housing. That affordability gap is the amount that needs to be subsidized. In calculating this fee, they, the study removed a prevailing wage from that calculation, resulting in a lower development cost, and therefore a lower affordability gap and a lower fee. So in a sense, it's, it's already been accounted for. And finally, I think that from staff's position, if the, if the council does wish to provide an incentive, we would recommend reducing the percentage of affordable units rather than, than the impact fees in order to incentivize the construction of units, which is the primary goal of the, of the ordinance. And then, so with that said, and as this slide shows, four out of six jurisdictions in San Mateo County that adopted fees within the last two years allowed the fee reductions. And just a comment about that is, is these are, this is sort of skewed because in general, according to 21 Elements, in Alameda County and Santa Clara County, 15 jurisdictions have adopted impact fees. And none of those jurisdictions reduce fees for prevailing wage or union projects. And so this is, this is kind of unusual, according to the consultant, that, that cities are incorporating this provision in impact fee ordinances. So that concludes my presentation, and staff recommends that you proceed with the waiver of the first reading of the ordinance and adoption of the resolution establishing the affordable housing impact fees, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Any questions for Mark at this time? Ken?
Good, Chair. Mark, could you go back and explain your reasoning on the $5 across the board? I'm really not agreeing with being farther away from Silicon Valley, since we have our own Silicon Valley here in San Bruno. So I'd like a better explanation on why we can't be at least with, you know, on par with Foster City with those fees, say, at least for office.
Well, I'll try, try to answer it this way. Those are the, that, those are the results within the study, that they show the feasibility level, and they set that as the threshold of feasibility. There, things have changed a lot since 2014. You know, I would, I, you know, revenues are probably higher, but also development costs are higher. And another point is that the, the maximum amount, the maximum justifiable fee, or the legally allowed fee, is, is much higher. I mean, it's, it's very high. So the council is, is free to have a higher fee below that, that maximum amount.
Okay. Can you, can you also explain what, what commercial projects, if we're saying office, what types of office projects would?
This is meant to cover all types of commercial projects. So it's, it's office, R&amp;D.
It says all new commercial development.
Yes. Yeah. So it's, it's basically, you know, retail, hotel, and then everything else is covered under the.
So vacant lot, it turns into commercial?
Yes.
Okay. But not a remodel, not a?
No.
An expansion?
An expansion, yes. New, new square footage.
Just new square footage?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Mark? Okay.
I got something.
Go ahead, Marty.
I kind of, no, I do agree with Councilman Navarro that being at the low end, and the maximum is 247, something like that? It's up there.
Yeah.
Right. You know, we're at five, and this is a booming area, you know, YouTube's building more office space, and if we're ever going to have enough money to build affordable housing, we need to get the revenue. So I would like to hear your recommendation of what that could be increased to, or my colleagues here on the table. And why is the limit five units? Where, where did that number come from?
So through the mayor, if I could respond to the first question regarding the, the $5 fee for commercial linkage. I think it would be helpful if Mark would give a little bit more explanation of the fact that, in terms of the analysis, the analysis was done particularly for the city of San Bruno, and established a recommended fee based on feasibility here, and, and Mark has done some additional research and, and contacted 21 Elements staff, consultant staff, to find out what the procedure would be to consider a higher fee. So it might be helpful to get that information. The other piece of this is that, as, as you all know, the city has embarked on a comprehensive development impact fee study, and will be looking at impact fees in a variety of areas. These fees are relatively low. We do expect that these fees, should they be put in place, would be considered as part of the overall development impact fee analysis conducted by the consultant we've engaged to make sure that we look at what are the range of impact fees, affordable housing, traffic, et cetera, and what is the capacity for new development to consider those. So I think Mark can provide more, more information regarding what could be done in the near term in terms of an adjustment. But as we proceed over the next three months or so with the full development impact fee study, these fees, along with others, could be considered, and there could be adjustments to these fees in the context of other impact fees, and assuring that there's capacity for development to occur. In other words, that we don't overburden yet, make sure that we, we get the impact fees that we need. So maybe we can start there, Mark, if you could.
Okay. Well, what some cities have done is start low and then increase it over time. I understand that Oakland, right now, is in the process of adopting fees, and they're, they're going to be adjusted based on different areas of the city. And in some areas, they will start with a fee, test it for a year, and then, then consider increasing it. You know, as, as I mentioned, the, the, the city can adopt a higher fee than, than the $5, as long as it's below that, that maximum. So that, that's one, that's, that is an option. And the other option, I think, is what, what David mentioned, that certainly this, this new study will take into account the, the housing impact fee, and will provide, you know, a lot, will provide new updated information on what's, what's possible to charge. And the other, the other issue, apparently, not apparently, but these fees should be revisited every few years, and, you know, a new technical study should be done to make sure that they're in line with what's going on in the community, what the local economy is, is doing. So that's, those are the, that's really what I can offer you right now, yeah.
Through the chair.
I read.
Just so it's clear, and I'm clear. This is only for affordable housing. We, we also have the opportunity to assess other impacts, especially on the commercials. So because commercial tends to have more traffic, cause more activities around, whatever, we also do those kinds of fees. So this is not just what we charge people who build an office building, this is only one piece of what we charge them. So I, I know we worked very hard in the last few years to attract more commercial, a, a quality that we want to reflect what San Bruno really deserves. So I think if we start with this, as you've recommended, and as the study has recommended, and, and maybe even revisit it, well, revisit it when the other impact fee study is finished, then we can adjust it at any time, correct?
Yeah, it's done by resolution, so, yes.
So, okay, so.
And then we'll get to public hearing, just really quick. The $5 is still, I think, low, when we're talking about comparison in the Nexus Study, which was all the communities coming together to do the stuff on just San Bruno. Also, when we have about the impact comparisons for San Mateo County, we have reduction for union. I would, I would.
Speaking on the mic, they can't hear you.
Sorry. I would, I would submit that when they're asking, or we're talking, or I'm going to be bringing up after a public.
Comment about prevailing wages, it's not for unions. It's for developers that choose to have a standard area wage or prevailing wage. It has nothing to do about unions. So I think that's a little misleading, to be honest, because to me, it goes beyond that. It's about a developer having a rebate for having prevailing wage, so that we have, we're paying, that people get paid that are doing work in this community so they can live in this community. So, and I'll come back.
Yeah, that label, that label is.
Thank you. I'll come back to that later.
Okay. Anything else? All right, this time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to address the council on this matter? Just stand at the podium and tell us your name and your street, please.
Barbara Fischenson, representing, Barbara Fischenson, representing the college district. I just wanted to say that we've had numerous discussions with the staff about this ordinance, and appreciate the adjustments that were made to allow our employees the residential housing that we're going to be building for this, number one, and the phasing of the affordable housing for the warranty. And we've had some very productive discussions about affordability plans for the entire development, the entire. We've had very productive discussions about the affordability plan for the entire development, and we'll be submitting that as part of our application.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for your time tonight. My name is Lior Tonwakko, and I'm with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. I've seen a lot of these go through most of those cities, so I have a little bit of, of background. I had talked to one of the staffers from one of the cities, and they had said, I'd asked them if they got pushback from any of their developers, if they'd seen a decrease in, in development, and, and one of them said, "Well, you know, the only thing we get is a check. We don't get any pushback, particularly from the commercial developers." So especially in San Mateo County, I think it's, it's pretty much accepted knowledge that if you don't pass these impact fees, you're pretty much leaving money on the table. So the Housing Leadership Council supports these, these initiatives, and especially the inclusionary, and we also support the staff's idea that the, all projects with housing should be subject to the inclusionary ordinance that you're, that you're proposing. The Housing Leadership Council really focuses on, on the most vulnerable, at-risk populations in, in San Mateo County, and you guys know, I mean, housing affordability is one of the biggest challenges that we're facing here. And, you know, it's starting to impact hiring, it's starting to impact people who, who want to come. So, and especially younger people like me, who, you know, I'm about 30 years old, I'm a professional, I live with my parents in Millbrae, and I just want to have more options because it doesn't look like homeownership is going to be something I can do in, in San Mateo County. So thank you so much for your leadership on this, and myself and the Housing Leadership Council supports this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Suresh Gandhi. I happen to know about this impact fee a week ago when we had a meeting with Mr. Waltering with respect to the project that I'm working on. And this project is at five hundred Silvan Avenue. That has been, the building has been closed for many years, a lot of issue with the building. Nobody can build anything over there with all the restrictions they have and so many people failed that. And I took up the idea about buying this building and developing this. And this had been going on for six months, but I just came to know last week. So here is, I understand that the affordable housing is very important and I really support that. But the impact also is very important. For my example, just I'm giving you from my example. The way they, I understand the per square foot twenty dollars impact fee, it would add about two hundred thousand dollars into my budget, which was not planned and which comes to about ten percent of my cost of the project, which is a substantial cost. And what's gonna happen with that cost? The rent will be increased because somehow somebody has to recover the cost and that would happen. So it goes really against the whole idea about affordability. Because you, one time you are taking money, another time you're increasing costs. So it really negates what you want to do. So that's, that's one concern that I have. So maybe, you know, there is some discussion about the rate and what you have. Also, the amount of the money you spend on that, I, I don't know whether, which is a weird problem, but I think the city has a big problem about homeless and there is nothing that you do about it. Maybe these funds should be used for the, I am a business owner in San Bruno. I run a successful hotel. I pay quarter of a million dollar in collecting taxes and paying to the city. Last few years, when the tax went from ten to twelve percent, automatically the city is collecting more money. But homeless problem, my guest and my employees experiencing is just unbelievable. Complaint after complaint happening, there are people sleeping. So this building that I bought it, really I bought it because there was homeless problem all the time. Either they sleep in our motel or they go into the room, they come into the kitchen and all kinds of problem. I think there's nothing happening. So city has to look in terms of not only the affordability, but also the people who are homeless and what can city do to prevent? Because indirectly, it is hurting the city, it's hurting the business. People get a bad view about the city, people coming in our hotel from all over the world. They see the homeless people right in front of that and they really get scared because they haven't seen anything about it. So I think maybe part of the money should be used to combat or to help this homeless issue that we have here. And believe me or not, there is a issue, if you want to see, I can see thousands of pictures I can show you that there is, there is a big issue there. And I'm really confronting every day with my guests. Either they are sleeping in the parking lot, they are going to the rooms, they are going into the rest of our breakfast room or all the neighboring dentist house or this building are all over there. And it's really a bad, bad thing for the city. It really impacts our business and our image, you know. I just wanted to bring that point to you so you know about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close the public hearing, gonna be precluded from talking to us on this item. Any action by the council?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion or action by the council? Yeah?
I'd, I'd like staff to answer what one of the speakers said as far as the, I guess, perceived contradiction of doing residential development, rental development and actually having to pay to do that. Now, is, correct me if I'm wrong, there is, in some cases for development, there is possibly some negotiation that'd be taken as far as possibly reducing that fee if there is an arrangement for affordability. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but if you can address that.
So I think probably Mark and I will work with this together in terms of a response. As far as the grand nexus study and the analysis that was done to support that, it did look, as you can see from the table here, it did look at rental housing. And as Mark indicated in his presentation, it looked at as housing is created, what are the needs in terms of services and products and employment to provide those services and products? And the housing, the affordable housing need that's generated. And that analysis resulted in a recommendation to each one of the participating agencies as to what the fees could or should be. And so we have for rental housing, a fee that's being proposed to you tonight at twenty dollars a square foot. And so the rationale I just described, it's within the study and it's, it's documented and supported. As, as we indicated, actually as Mark indicated, these fees would be collected, put in a fund and they could be used for a variety of affordable housing opportunities here in San Bruno over time. From, you know, things he mentioned to, to lowering the affordability levels to building new housing. In terms of the affordable housing ordinance, there are provisions there that, say in this case, in this case for rental housing, the impact fee is twenty dollars per square foot. There's an alternative that a developer could propose an affordable housing plan, could be considered by the city council and by way of an agreement, the city council could agree to another option. So for example, in this case, if this particular developer, Mr. Gandhi, would be interested in working with the city and perhaps I'll suggest dedicating a unit within the project that would be deed restricted over time to a certain income level, affordable income level, that could be an option, that could be considered in lieu of, instead of paying the fee. So the ordinance's structure does provide for that kind of alternative. With rental housing, fee first, but an alternative could be considered for inclusionary. So there are some options in this particular case and, and further, there was a question too about the number of units and we didn't answer that. I'd like to answer that as well. The current ordinance, the below market rate ordinance that the city has had, has a threshold of ten. As we look at circumstances coming out of the great recession, the housing crisis, et cetera, and the desire to try to capture more opportunities for fees and inclusionary units, the staff is recommending that that threshold be reduced from ten to five. Again, as we look at five, why five? Well, for example, if we look at standard code language subdivision maps, five is a standard threshold for a subdivision map versus four for a parcel map, as an example. Some other communities use five as well. And as Mark indicated in his comments and as in the study, all of these projects are generating need. And as, as mentioned earlier, we are recommending that all commercial projects pay this impact fee, the commercial linkage fee, and that the threshold for residential be five, not ten. And as, as indicated by Mark in his presentation, all of these projects, commercial and residential, for the reasons he mentioned, are generating affordable housing need. And so our recommendation is to, to try to address that. And, and by the way, I think you well know that the fees that are being suggested here are only a portion, a part of what's actually needed. This is a help, you know, it's one measure to kind of cobble together to address the overall need.
Anything else? I would just like to add that ever since, we got ten good years of redevelopment in the city. And developers came and we have a lot to show for, for that. And they got subsidies, tax breaks. In return, we got some affordability. And as far as I know, there's no, there's hardly any vacancies. And ever since the governor eliminated redevelopment, I mean, personally, I've been looking, searching for that vehicle, that resource on how we can get back into, you know, incentivizing or funding some way to, you know, get some affordability. And I'm not the only one. Every, nearly every city in this county is looking at it because you're not gonna get it from Sacramento, you're not gonna get it from the federal government. This is probably the best answer right now available to us. We've got other things that we can talk about and everything and I'm very proud that we can, that we've done this and that we are, you know, on top of things. And, and I'm glad that the county has put these programs together. But this is really the only way we can, we can address the problems, you know, in our community. And it's not putting ballot measures on rent control. We've already seen how that's failed. So I think whatever we can get, and I think you know just as well as anyone what the forecast is in this community as far as development, I just don't wanna shortchange this. I wanna address our existing, you know, longtime developers, a longtime residents here, that yes, this is what, this is what you're gonna have to pay, but there are options on how you can get around it so that you don't have to stick it to the renters and, you know, defeat the whole purpose. I'm a little concerned that we're, we're probably a little short on commercial development because I foresee that we're probably going to get a lot of commercial development and I don't wanna miss the boat on shortchanging that and then get into another cycle where there's, you know, we're gonna have a drought of development. So I think, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to go a little higher and then we can adjust that. But this is something that I've been searching for, for at least the last couple of years and I thank staff for bringing it forward.
Irene.
Through the chair. I went ahead and then my travels went to and got the resolutions for the other cities in regards and I was specifically interested, I appreciate your first year comments on the five dollars, so I have a better understanding. And as far as again, the rebate for prevailing wage, we talk about the nexus study takes that into account, but that is assuming that every project then is prevailing wage. And that is not the case, nor can you guarantee that. I know we talk about visiting, try something for a year, like you said, and it can be adjusted and whichever way. I'd like to see, and I've seen in these other resolutions from these other agencies, seems to be, this is what they propose, this is what they're doing from the county to Redwood City and it's on the board. So I would like to see us include at least for the first year. And my suggestion to my colleagues is to have that prevailing wage standard placed in there.
Okay, anything else?
I'd, I'd like to respond to that. Cause I hear, I hear what you're saying. But if we're ever going to raise the funds for affordable housing, we need to raise the funds, you know, we can't So I respect that view, just that I, I have a different view of that, that I, I think that we should not provide the reduction and go along with staff's report. And, but I'm for raising the office space to a, a different level. Would it be ten? You know, let's go ten.
When you say you're not in favor of, you're talking about the reduction for prevailing wage.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I'm not particularly in favor of that reduction either. I think it's, it's pretty well baked into the original nexus study. And I would just wanna make sure that the, you know, you're gonna give a break for prevailing wage, but chances are those aren't the people that are really gonna need the, the affordable housing, so. And I think at this point in time, we could, I would go for an increase on the, on the office.
Through the mayor, as staff has discussed this matter, an option for you to consider would be perhaps for the commercial linkage fee would be to, to raise it from five to ten dollars. Perhaps across the board in terms of office, retail, hotel, all categories. And then request that staff specifically as part of the comprehensive development impact fee analysis, evaluate that fee in terms of the other fees that no doubt the city will want to consider and evaluate the capacity of new development to take on those fees and to allow development to continue to occur in this community for revitalization purposes. So that, that may be an option for you to consider.
Through the chair.
Irene.
I agree with you about the office and the hotel. I think usually people, companies that do offices and hotels are pretty big, they have the capacity to pay those. The retail, I'm not so sure about. I'd like to leave that at five. We have a lot of small, you know, mom and pop type retail people that go in and create a store and I would hate to impact that. That's part of the feel of San Bruno to me. So I would, I would like to do office at ten, retail at five, hotel at ten, leave the rest the same. Not do the prevailing, keep the staff's recommendation about prevailing wage and keep the language in there about being flexible, about having a unit, I mean, doing the, a unit that you could rent at a lower rate instead of paying the rates. So you have that flexibility in there. So that's my recommendation.
All I'll say is I can agree with your recommendation, Irene, on the cost, but not on the prevailing, but halfway, so that's better than what I started with.
Well.
But the prevailing, I think, is something you start with, you analyze it and if it's not done now, it won't be done. And I think it's about paying people the what, anyway, I won't repeat myself since we have other business, but I think we, we understand my position, so, but thank you for
Well, well, maybe, maybe we can find a compromise between the twenty-five percent. Maybe there's something else we can do with developers that use the prevailing wage. I mean, maybe it's not the twenty-five percent, but maybe there's something else. So maybe we should look at doing what I just said and asking staff to relook at that portion and come back with a recommendation from that. Maybe there's a combination, maybe there is, you know, maybe you do twelve percent instead of twenty-five percent or, I don't know. We don't have to sweep the whole thing under the rug. Maybe there's something else we can do.
Well, through, through the chair, I mean, that's, there is an option there and it says that the city council wishes to consider providing, the center, the staff recommends reducing the percentage of affordable units required rather than reducing the amount of the impact fees.
But does that mean the prevailing wage?
But that is, that is, that is in lieu of the
In lieu of it.
In lieu of the twenty-five percent reduction.
Right.
Of the impact fee. Correct me if I'm
The intent there is to fashion a provision, develop a provision that would encourage actually building and including residential units within individual projects. So I might make a suggestion. If there's an inclination to go this direction, to look at an option regarding the issue of standard wage, prevailing wage, there is the ordinance and there is the fee resolution. There, there could be an option, and this may be for the city attorney or, Mark, maybe you could comment on this, where you could move forward with the ordinance this evening in terms of waiving first reading and moving forward with the ordinance. You could give us a little bit of time to come back at the second meeting. And in the meantime, we could look at this issue and address it in the context of the fee resolution. But I'm going to ask Mark and perhaps the city attorney to, to comment on that approach.
Yeah. So my understanding is that the, the amount of the fee is, is determined in the resolution and the, the reduction for prevailing wages is, can also be incorporated into the resolution. It's not, wouldn't, would not be within the ordinance. So unless you wanna change anything within the ordinance itself, anything else, you could adopt the ordinance and then make adjustments to the, to the resolution.
Okay.
Like what Irene said.
So, so we could introduce the resolution as it stands and then play with the
You, you, sorry, you'd introduce the resolution, or excuse me, you'd introduce the ordinance
Right.
Ordinance, sorry.
And then bring the resolution back at the next time.
Yes. So I, I would like to do that.
Thank you, Irene.
I will introduce the resolution.
Waive the first reading.
I'm sorry, waive the first reading first.
Second. Motion second to waive first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Irene.
So now I'd like to introduce So now I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, the ordinance.
Ordinance.
The ordinance. Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rueng.
Aye.
And thank you to my colleagues, and thank you, Irene, for the, the idea to bring that back. At least staff have an opportunity and see what-
And if they, there's no, I mean, we can hash that out.
Yes.
But I, is there agreement about the fees then? The 10, the 5, the 10, and the rest the same?
I, I, I agree with that.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, is that, is that enough, or do you want me to?
10, 5, 10.
So you're not, you're not taking action on the resolution tonight? You're agreeing on the commercial linkage fee amount, and you're asking for us to come back with some alternatives with respect to a reduction in the fee for prevailing rate? Is that correct? And you, it would be your intent then to take up consideration of action on the resolution at your next meeting?
Yes, and I would like a, a little further in-depth to us as to what the reduction of the amount for prevailing wage actually does, or doesn't do.
So, so if a developer comes in and says, we're going to spend a million dollars on this, and we are not doing prevailing wage, and we counteract and say, we will reduce these fees by 25% if you use prevailing wage, I mean, that's, that's the negotiation part, right? What, what actual impact would that have? Is that, am I getting to the gist of it?
I think that's what Jim was asking for.
Yeah.
I think that's the question.
I want to see what the real, I want to see what the real benefit is of that.
Providing some scenarios, 20 house development, single family home, or a hotel of sub-size or a commercial space.
Irene wanted to know is, or maybe Jim, is the consensus on the rate, the dollars, okay? Or do you need some motion?
So what, what we heard is what we would cap, we would capture in the resolution when we represent it for your action consideration, the hotel and office at $10 per square foot and retail at $5 per square foot.
That's right.
And they, and the housing, as shown in the slide previously.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.